Call the meeting to order when we start from this side and introduce ourselves.
Mark Rich.
Rick Lyles.
Vice Chair John Delley will be running the meeting tonight.
Patrick Lines, alternate member.
The second order, second agenda item is adoption of minutes from the May 5, 2021 meeting. Does anybody have a motion?
Move that they, yeah, but I have a comment.
Okay. Should ask if there's any additions or deletions.
Yeah, on page four, mid-page, right above where it says Chairman Fink opened. It talks about contact MDOT for an off-site intersection only if proposed project would generate more than 100 trips per hour. I think that's an actual error, could be the peak hour, or it could be daily traffic, but it's not 100 trips per hour all day long. Because that would be a lot, I mean, for something like this. So, anyway, I would just offer that correction.
Wasn't Steve saying that we'd only have to get something from MDOT?
Right.
If it generated more than 100 trips.
But the criterion is incorrectly stated. 100 trips per hour would be 2,400 a day, which is, it's not stated right. It could be maximum, or it could be peak hour, which is probably what it is. So with that correction, I'm good.
Okay. Did you make the motion?
I did.
Okay. And I think Mark's seconded. All in favor?
With the correction.
Next item up for approval is the final plan review for major use site development and subdivision of new and existing structures entitled Maine SS-1 LLC Doing Businesses One-Stop Self-Storage for Maine SS-1 LLC. The proposal is to renovate and expand an existing self-storage facility on a 3.5-acre parcel tax map, 31 lot 10-1 located at 36 Hagan's Elbow. All the subject properties located in the rural zone. Is someone here representing the owner?
Steve Salisbury. We discussed this project with the staff since our last meeting, and we've now noted on our plan that the gate won't be installed for security, and we've taken all references of any parking in the front. Between the street here and the first building, that's no longer part of the equation. That was the only changes since our last meeting to the plan.
Well, we have to, we have to, there's a waiver here for the lighting plan, is that right?
Yes, that was in our original application. The board needs to act on that waiver technically to...
And separately?
Yep. Doesn't seem like there was any opposition to our request last time we met.
It seemed like one gentleman, neighbor's scope. It seems like what lighting is there now and what's planned fits into the neighborhood.
Yeah, going from no lighting at all to lighting up the new buildings.
Does the board have any questions for Steve?
Do we still need the Historic Preservation Commission letter, is that correct?
Yes, that has not been received yet, it's been requested.
And all the outstanding plan revisions have been made?
Yes.
Is that correct? Staff agree with that?
Oh, there's just a couple of little things that I think could be fixed for the board of plans. The two, two things that are crossed out on the TRT report.
Okay, the front setback thing, is that one of them? Yes.
Yes.
Oh, the front setback, I looked at that, Elena, and we measured our 20-foot setback from the edge of the travel surface, not having anything else, we don't know what the extent of that right-of-way is. So I just took 20 feet from the edge of the travel surface, not from the property line, which goes to the middle of the road, but from the edge of the, edge of the travelway.
I see.
So I think that's correct.
Does that work with your interpretation?
Yeah.
Okay.
And what was the other comment about the turnaround?
Yeah, that's not such a big deal.
We show a 20 by 70, that's the, that would be the limits over there.
I think she was talking about the one up by the small pod, the by 20.
Up here?
Yeah. There was just a confusion of the ladder truck backing up there, and what's going to be there, is it going to be level, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I got a note there, gravel area for truck maneuvering.
Yeah.
This will be level enough to, you know, back up to.
Perfect.
There's no changing contours across that whole area, so it's going to be flat.
That was what we were kind of, we were trying to decipher.
Yeah, those little thin blue lines here, one-foot contour line.
Yeah, it would have overpowers if you had the lines underneath all that and on top of it.
There's a lot of color there, but yeah, that's generally flat, that whole area is, is currently flat.
Okay.
So if you're comfortable with those two things, then I would say you don't need to note that.
I would ask Tom a question. On the diagram, reference to ladder one, I mean, it looks like the turning, it looks like some of it's on pavement, but there's some also on the gravel area?
Correct.
The gravel area for truck maneuvering.
Yeah. Yeah, both those fire truck maneuvering areas are going to be gravelled. Hopefully, they'll never be needed, but...
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Sufficiently built to handle the weight of the fire truck.
And the gravel area there in front of the warehouse demolition replace, I mean, that's going to be plowed?
Yes, yeah, because that's no storage as here, so we'll be plowing down across that whole site.
Any other questions? I guess I need to open a public hearing. See if there's any, anybody in the audience have a comment about this development? Are we still doing online comments, Gary, or, okay, so we don't have to wait to see if somebody's calling in or emailing in? So I'll close the public hearing. Would somebody like to make a motion? And we need to include in pending approval of the letter from the natural area and historic places?
Just from the Historic Preservation Commission?
We have to do the waiver of the lighting thing first.
Yes, that too, please.
Want to give it a go?
Sure. That the applicants would move that the applicants request for a waiver from providing a lighting plan be accepted or be approved?
Second?
All in favor of the waiver for the lighting plan?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Such as it is.
So that was just a motion on the...
That was a motion on the...
Just on the waiver?
Right, just on the waiver, okay.
Okay.
You want to...
Oh, yes.
Oh, geez, so much responsibility here. It seems like I didn't have that much responsibility on Zoom, but whatever.
You've been promoted.
What's that?
You've been promoted.
Yes, there we go.
Well, you are secretary, right?
Oh, yeah, so that's a weighty thing. Anyway, move for approval of final plan for the major use site development and subdivision of new and existing structures entitled Maine SS-1 LLC Doing Businesses As One-Stop Self-Storage for Maine. Contingent on, contingent, is that the appropriate word here?
Condition.
Condition on, condition on the receipt of a letter from the Maine Historical Preservation Commission.
Finding no concerns.
Finding no concerns, sorry. I forget you're a lawyer.
Just reading what the staff wrote, so don't give me that much credit.
I just try to read less. Okay, so that's my motion.
Is there...
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, next one is preliminary plan review for a major use site development and subdivision of new and existing structures entitled XL Space for Rockipon LLC. The proposal is to construct a 43-unit self-storage facility in a 1.76-acre parcel tax map, 75 lot 11-1 located at 1,000 in Bangor Road. All the subject properties located in the drinking water zone. Someone here representing the owner.
Stephen Salisbury, and John Bates is here as well. Here's the plan that you were provided, and I blew up the aerial logic with TV here. So hopefully, everybody knows the property where the metal Quotset hut is they use for boat storage on Bangor Road, which is located here. This is the Quotset hut location now. This is the little red office building that's in front of it. And obviously, the Bangor Road to the right. We have four existing entrances cut into the curb or culverted and over the ditch to access this property now. And we're going to maintain those, maintain those curb cuts with the permission of DOT. We sought an entrance permit for the DOT for the additional use, not changing use, just additional capacity here. And I have not heard back from the department. So we have a 48-foot wide existing building that will come down, new foundation, the slab will be reutilized and actually widen just a little bit to accommodate the new storage lockers. And this, this facility here will be all new construction right at the 50-foot setback line, because you have a 50-foot setback from the edge of the town, the state's right-of-way line. So we'll use the area between the right-of-way and the building for maneuvering. There's 40 feet between the buildings for maneuvering as well. I think these doors are going to accommodate, some might be nine-by-nine, some might be 12-foot doors, depending on the final configuration of the building. But we believe that'll be plenty of accommodation. The fire truck, the 37-foot radius for the fire truck is in excess of what we've provided there, so there's plenty of room for truck maneuvering. These buildings will be heated. Our fuel storage, which would be a propane tank, is here in the very back of the project, away from all the traffic, and that'll be guarded by a couple of Jersey areas. And that'll, that'll supply both building heaters, which will warm water for radiant floor heat. There's going to be no change to the office building, and the drainage will stay essentially the same now. Right now, from a Quotset hut to the edge of the road is all packed gravel and grass is growing up on it here and there. The last, the last use of the area between the building and the road was for Jared May Phillips' landscaping business. And he had trucks and some storage there for his landscaping products and what have you. So we're just going to reutilize that space. The drainage now is from a Quotset hut eastly towards the road, it's captured by this ditch and culverted across the street. And I show an area where the Department of Transportation took an easement for stormwater drainage across the street where it goes. So when they rebuilt that, they took whatever they need, felt they needed to pipe that stormwater across the street. That's all I have.
What's the deal with that, there's one residential unit in there?
Yes.
In the midst of that?
Yep.
Is that a separate ownership, separate lot?
No, same, it's on the same property, and it's going to stay there. This little house right here is 20 by 30, or 20 by 28.
Is that used as a rental unit?
Yes, yep, it'll, it'll stay. We're going to provide, I just park in the old place now, but we're going to provide three parking spaces here.
For that house?
For that house, yeah, because this will be needed for cars coming and going. It won't be gated, so people can come and go 24 hours a day.
When you say won't be gated, you mean around the storage facilities?
That's right, yeah, it's just going to be, for now, we're not proposing any fencing gating. We're just, we've got security lights around the building, and you'll see my lighting plan. We brought the lighting around the buildings and maneuvering area up to rule standards.
And the, the computer placed, and that what's...
Here.
Yeah, and that is, is that a totally separate thing, or is that shared?
That's on the property too, it's part of the ownership of...
That's what I thought.
John's. And the sewer for these two, the house and the office, is actually up here. Off the property, but we'll have an easement for that to use that. The well is here, that supplies the house and the office, the house is right beside the Quotset hut now. Those, those aren't going to change, we won't need any water for storage other than to fill the radiant heat pipes. That'll be a one-time thing.
And will the curb cuts for this, I mean, I understand that there's this kind of weird curb cut thingy in front of the little office building?
Yes.
And then there are, in essence, what amount of curb cuts for the, for the, for the, for the new storage facility? Are those going to be improved?
We're going to pave them, I think, 50 feet in, they're gravel now, so we're going to go from the edge of the pavement and 50 feet on those two entrances there. May pave the whole thing, but we're least promising will pave those aprons.
And there's no requirement for MDOT to sign off on any of those?
There is, because we're going to increase the...
Okay.
Amount of traffic there, so I believe I need a DOT permit, and I've made an application for such.
Okay, but you haven't gotten that?
Haven't got that back yet. I don't expect any difficulties in traffic, the town is very low, so...
And this is still going to be used for boat storage, is that correct?
Whatever they want for John Phillips now, it's all open. He just packs the client's boats in there for the winter and shuts the door. But these will be individual lockers, they'll have a key, their own lock to these, to these individual units, so self-storage.
Somewhere along the line, and somewhere. You indicated that the lot was impervious?
Yes.
That's probably not, but close enough.
Well, gravel's considered impervious.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah, and it's gravel, I show the edge of the existing gravel, this little dotted line now represents the currently gravelled area. So it's gravel from here to the, except for the little ditch, it's, it's all gravel now.
Okay.
But then you say you may end up paving?
But that one, that wouldn't change the stormwater flow.
If they're doing the calculations now as impervious?
Yep.
It doesn't get...
Doesn't change ni...
More impervious.
I think on the line that line, the TRT report discussed the questions regarding stormwater. I think, Elena, or is anyone on the staff that raised that note? If you could explain it a little more, what your thinking was there?
Yes, I'll try. I've truly kind of struggled with this. The general question of when, when the different stormwater management applicability thresholds would be met for redevelopment that doesn't also increase your impervious area? On the one hand, this is your opportunity to achieve some treatment. On the other, maybe existing in that way, and especially in a, you know, a flat sort of site like this one, the likelihood that anything can really be changed or improved is significantly improved is pretty low. So that just kind of concept in general, plus the ambiguity of the language. There's two different sections in Article 10 that use the phrasing, "a project that results in X amount of impervious area." So does "result in" mean it's new, or does "result in" mean it's being maintained?
Can you...
And not decreased, or...
Can you point out those sections that...
Sure, so if you're in Article 10, so there's, I guess you'd say it's 1,003.3B. I applicability A for the flooding control standard. That's one of the areas that...
The "result in"...
Result in.
20,000 more.
The other one... The other one is further down under C, Quality Control Standards, I applicability threshold, D resulting in a parcel of land having 10% or more of impervious area.
And the, as the original use of the property that's ongoing right now, when was that approved? Do you know, Steve, or how long's it been there?
I don't believe it's ever approved by the planning board. And it's been, it was a long, long time ago. Branch Pond Marine was, yeah, Branch Pond Marine was located there, they sold boats and motors. Where the red building is now, there was a building there before that actually was, I think it was a long way into the lot, it was turned 90 degrees, but there was an older building, that's where the shop and the showroom were. I got torn down and replaced 15, 20 years ago by the red building, office building that's there now.
Was it all gravel then?
Some gravel was added when Jeremy set up his landscaping business on the south side of the property.
And that Quotset hut has been there for...
Quotset hut's been there since the 50s.
Yeah.
According to the tax card, 55, I think.
So it's a historical building, is that what you're saying?
Could be.
And you're going to rip it down?
I hope not.
I mean, I think the building up there now, which used to house the toy maker, I think that's fairly new.
Yes, 20, 15, 15 maybe, 20 years ago, yep.
Does the staff have any concerns regarding the impacts of the proposed project on stormwater or anything along those lines?
Some of the information that was provided in between the first submission and the resubmission after TRT was to clarify the location, direction, and size of the culvert and the discovery of that easement. So that was not on the original plan. That helps a bit, that that's, that's been accounted for. We do know that it's very flat, and there wouldn't be much opportunity to really treat in a way that would achieve much more than what's going on there now. So I, I wouldn't be uncomfortable with kind of saving that larger concept discussion for a later time when we can hopefully refine the language in there to be more clear about when these things apply. But I did want to bring it to your attention, because there's also, in that first section I mentioned, B gives you discretion to apply that flooding standard as to smaller projects, meaning under 20,000 square feet of new impervious, but same kind of concept. If you think that there's going to be an issue, and then also on top of that provides an exception that if easements are obtained, it's in, it's on the next page, exception to the standard requirement, that if existing downstream drainage ways can accommodate what's there, then they don't have to go to the trouble of retaining it on site, so...
And typically, isn't there kind of a rule of thumb that if you don't increase, if you don't increase, well, that you can't increase the runoff relative to what it is today?
Right.
Then you're good to go?
That's the...
So, you know, I don't see where, you know, a tin roof versus an impervious gravel makes a whole hell of a difference in terms of how much runoff you get, so...
The same amount of rain is falling.
Exactly, and the same amount is pretty much running off.
Right, the directions that it goes is, might be a little bit different in the speed, but yes, it's not that much different.
Yeah, and I think that in resulting, result in language, I read that to be that the project resulting in is a change, and we're not really, we're talking about impervious surface here, and we're not changing that impervious surface.
Right, there's no...
And then, and the law is that if there's ambiguity in language, it favors the landowner, the applicant. So I think considering all that, that the staff has voiced any concerns, and that's a longstanding property, I don't, I'm not concerned with, I don't think that applies, and I would not, I would not require any additional in that regard under Article 10.
I mean, the downstream drainage, and this is, this is a really flat piece of property, and it drains towards the road, so in any addition to it, I mean, it's going to drain really slow towards the road, and I mean, it's not going off the property, so to speak, and...
Well, it goes under the culvert, right?
Yeah, it goes under Route 1A, yep.
But I don't think that flow is going to increase at the, yeah, at the beginning of the culvert.
At the culvert, no, it shouldn't, because it's already running there now, and we're not going to change the impervious area any.
Elena, you happy proceeding, or is there wording, word salad, something that you want a more qualified opinion?
No, I think I'm, I think I'm happy proceeding, I just wanted to bring it to your attention and get your input, and also prepare us for future discussion on how to, how to improve that language.
Tom, I have one question for you. Fire department access, would you need to get to the backside of the longer building?
So my understanding is that we should be able to get up to the side of the building, and then we can run hose out of the backside, because to be honest, if I've got a fight, if that propane tank's going, the back of the building's on fire and the front of the building's on fire, so I'm going to put my truck on the corner, I'm going to run one hose one way and one hose the other way. Because I, honestly, I don't want to be out back with that propane tank if it actually, the bloody doesn't go the way it's supposed to, and the tank actually explodes.
Okay, I mean, I was kind of wanting, because on the north side, I mean, if you wanted to get the fire truck around the north side of the longer building, that's where the snow storage is going to be. So that's what I was just kind of wondering about, whether...
My understanding is that all the doors are going to be on that front side, there's going to be no access on the back, it's all going to be just metal. So if anything, we're going to cut our way through the front, through the, through the doors and make access that way.
Okay. A little minor thing, Steve, on page 14, and it really doesn't affect the project, but under the project overview?
Yes.
Okay, the storage buildings, actually where you go, it says 19 units, 12 by 24 each?
Yes.
Those are actually 12 by 48.
Yeah, you're right.
And then the other one is 24 units, you have 12 by 48, and I think it should be 12 by 24.
You are right.
And the square footage is still the same, and that really didn't mean anything, other than...
Disgustingly, on the eye, going like this, late in the afternoon.
Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the board? And I will open the public hearing. Anybody here would like to address this, this project? Is anyone opposed to the public hearing?
I think you're on a roll, Rick, if you'd like to...
Sure. Move that the preliminary plan review be accepted as complete, or the plan review, no, preliminary plan be accepted as complete for a major use development and subdivision of new and existing structures entitled XL Space for Rocky Pond LLC.
Second? The move in second in, all on paper? Right. Next on the agenda is preliminary plan review for a major use site development and major subdivision entitled Denver Trails for Seabin Investments. The proposal is to construct seven four-unit multifamily dwellings on a 6.5 acre parcel. Tax map 5819-3, located at 21 Denver Way. All the subject property is located in the urban zone. Somebody here has any owner?
Say yes.
Good evening.
Say yes.
Yes, sorry. Didn't hear you.
Okay. Dane?
Chip has the P award engineers.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, we, we've all seen this property before, I think, or at least most of us, mostly on the board. It's originally...
Several times.
Excuse me?
Several times.
Yeah, several times, exactly. I think it was a couple of years ago that it was approved as a 15 single-family house I don't have a copy of that playing with me, but really a lot is quite similar compared to that. You know, we kept this main trunk road. That's identical to what was Denver Way, that 15, again, that 15-unit, single-family The water is still gonna be supplied by the well. We did shift that a little bit for setback purposes. What is proposed here now is seven four-unit buildings. So, what that does do is it does increase our unit count over what we had before. However, it's a little bit denser. Obviously, they're, they're compacted into, into four-unit buildings. So, what that does do is it decreases quite substantially our actual impervious surface over what was previously approved. You may, again, I don't know how familiar you are with the old application, but we had two different spur roads coming off of, of this main trunk line to service those individual houses. And those are now not gonna be proposed. So, for those reasons, we're, and the fact that we're kind of condensing these buildings, it is quite a substantial decrease in overall impervious surface. So, you know, kind of the way we approach this is really what's, what's changing here? You know, we don't have a lot of, trying not to reinvent the wheel if we don't have to, but, you know, from a stormwater perspective, again, we're decreasing impervious surface, not changing drainage patterns really at all. So, our, our kind of approach there is that, you know, we're, we're making this better actually over what, over what was actually previously approved. Flow should decrease over that, when compared with that. The biggest change really with this application compared to with the last one is the wastewater disposal. We did have to add two additional fields. You'll look, you'll notice those on the upper left corner and down on the bottom labeled septic field four. Those are the two additional fields that we did have to add. Septic fields one and two are in the same locations that they were previously. We do now have those, those designs that just came in just recently. So, I do have designs for septic fields three and four, as well as the test pit information for those. Other than that, really everything is, is kind of remaining the same here. We are still gonna utilize the fire cistern. I know that was a discussion we had with the fire inspector, that, you know, whether we were going to sprinkle these or, or utilize, you know, some construction technique, or construction techniques to avoid that. So, we'll be doing two hour firewalls between every two units in these buildings. That will avoid the need for sprinkles, or sprinklers, and we can utilize that fire cistern that we had previously designed and located.
I'm not mistaken, that was a 10,000 gallon?
That is, correct. Yep.
So, what happened is they're going from apartments that requires to be sprinkled to, they had to put in high-challenged firewalls and basically takes them to townhouses, the one and two family townhouses, so they can go and utilize the 10,000 gallon cistern. So, once they make that separation, technically the building is technically two separate buildings with a space in between that can't be, have anything in it. So, it's, they consider it one or two family dwellings at that point instead of four apartments.
And there's four units per building?
That's correct. Yep.
So, they'd be split, there'd be two units on each side?
Correct.
I think in the, in the TRT notes, and I think in your plans, that you were gonna provide a project overview and just kind of an architectural rendering. I mean, I'm always interested in seeing what it's gonna look like.
Yep.
And Mr. Bates builds beautiful buildings.
Sure.
So, I'm certainly sure this is gonna be another gem.
I'm sure.
But I'm, I'd like to see what it looks like.
Yeah, we can certainly provide a elevation view of these buildings. Absolutely.
And then I also need one for the high, high fire challenge wall as well.
Okay. Yeah, we'll be in touch more on that, too. I wanted to run a few details by on that, too. So, thank you.
I guess, getting back to you, Tom, I mean, the 10,000 gallon tank, do you feel is sufficient? Because we, we had gone from, I think, two units to now four.
It means the ordinance says 10,000 gallons every 1,000 feet from the whole project from the beginning, from where their pavement starts to the end, I think, was 800 feet. So, it's under the 1,000. So, the owner, it's only required to have one.
Okay. So, it doesn't depend on how many buildings are, are there, just the length of the road?
Yeah.
Kind of looks like you wish it was different.
I do, but I can't, you know, our ordinance, the way that reads and the way it says, I can't, you know, can't really sit there and change that part.
Understand. A trip at the end of the road, and I think it says approximate leach field location. That must've been the old one from there.
That, that is the leach field that services the nine-unit building that exists out front on, on the separate property, that is now a separate property. On the lower left of your plan, you'll see the nine-unit apartment building. Yep. That, the, the septic for that building actually is, is that one out back.
Oh.
Yep. So, back recently, 2020, I guess it was, they subdivided this back piece from the parcel with the nine-unit. And as part of that, you know, the easements for that, benefiting that nine-unit for that leach field were all figured out.
Okay. Would, from the staff point of view, would we, would you need to see a line going from the nine-unit apartment building to that leach field?
It actually is there.
Is it?
It's just very grayscale. I, it's...
It's force main, yeah.
Yeah, it says FM. And you'll see it just above the, the baseline where, has the numbers on it, kind of in the middle of the road. Yeah, it doesn't show up real well underneath the, the hatch for the pavement.
Okay. If staff can see it.
I see it. It's right down the road.
Okay.
Yeah, if you look at 800...
Yeah, you can see it pretty good there.
800 FM, EM.
FM.
FM, yeah.
Yep.
Follows the road.
Force main follows the road.
Yeah, so that road exists, you know, down, down to that septic system. They bear the force main in that. So, we'll be utilizing that road and all of our utilities will go within that as well.
So, are these lots are gonna be separate now? I presume that that needs an easement?
Yes, there, there, I believe currently is an easement for, between, you know, for the nine-unit to utilize the septic field on the back there. I think it's part of that subdivision. That would've had to be factored in, in order to get that subdivided.
And in your, in your application, on page two or four, what is the estimated cost of the proposed development or changes? And then what are the intended start and completion dates of proposal? And you plan on filling those in?
Yes, I, yep, I guess so. Yes, we certainly can.
I may be mistaken, but is there a financial letter in here about...
As, oh, as far as proof of finance capacity?
Yep.
Yeah, I think we can certainly provide that if that's, if that's needed. Once we have an idea of what the estimated cost is, we'll make sure we have a letter that covers that.
I believe that is required, correct?
Yeah. Okay.
So, staff had recommended that this not be approved, pretty much? That's where you were?
I think you can approach it either way, either to just find it incomplete and give them time to get everything together and come back when they're ready. Or, I guess, depending on what Chip indicates can be provided by the next deadline. If they feel that they can provide the, all those missing pieces, then you could keep the public hearing open and continue it to the date certain of the next regular meeting, July 7th, so that the public notice stands and anybody who's interested can continue to follow the process.
And if we do that, we can...
You would just not make a decision as to completeness right now?
And on, in July, then...
Then you would.
Could we both do a preliminary approval and the final approval?
Um...
Or, or does that put the whole thing on a month?
Are you just, in July, you just do, be a final act? Be the whole thing? And you'll just say the application's complete. This is still your preliminary meeting. You're just gonna declare it's complete. And then you can go ahead and move on to the final approval, I believe.
At the July meeting?
Yeah.
So, in other words, you know, doing that doesn't delay...
Right.
These guys, if that's an issue?
You're talking about doing a preliminary and final at one meeting?
No, no, no. This is your preliminary review. You're just not gonna vote whether it's complete.
Well, I think more importantly, the complete information is not provided. So, we as staff, the board, and the public does not have the full information that they need to ensure a thorough process.
Can we fill in the missing pieces now?
No. The, the biggest issue I have is we don't have the soil designs.
For the septic?
For the septic. And you have, I don't know if you have 10 feet between, you have, this is gonna become a public water supply, is what I understand it.
Correct. Yep.
Okay, you've got a force main right beside the water line. You've got to do at least 10 feet of separation on that.
Correct.
I don't know if you've got that. The other concern I have is you're running, you're gonna run PVC under the roadway to this, to the septic field number one for buildings five and three. So, now we've got a sewer line that's gravity feet, I'm assuming, going across the road, over the top of a water line, over the top of a force main. Whoever's doing the digging out there is gonna be rural capital.
Oh, there's no question.
You know.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, that's, that's all gotta be figured out. You know, the inverts of all of that has to be, has to be figured out. We know that it'll, it'll work based on what we've done. We haven't yet assigned inverts to all of that, but, you know, that's a...
You know, concerned with the, no, that sewer main, if it's gravity full, it's, it's, it's not gonna be blow to frost line.
Some of these are definitely gonna be, gonna have to pumps, there's no question.
So, you might have a pump station, you might take...
Right.
Well, then, to do that, those tanks, well, we'll, we'll discuss it.
Yeah, we, there's definitely ways to make all of the septic lines work, there's no question, whether they're pumps or gravity. That's all absolutely something we can figure out. I guess my, certainly, first of all, I guess, what, what would be the deadline to get, to get this all in? I have, like I said, I have, I have the soil stuff now. I can get that to you tomorrow, Dwight.
I feel like it's the 22nd, but...
Okay.
Let me look.
I would say we, we can submit about anything in that timeframe. My ultimate goal would be not to push this back another month if we, we can help it. So, if there's any way to do as likely as suggesting, that'd be great.
So, the deadline for applications for the July meeting is the 10th with the 22nd being the post TRT resubmission deadline.
So, June 10th?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's coming right up.
Right.
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll, I mean, one way or the other, I would like to plan to go that route. And, you know, I have every expectation we can hit that. It's just, we can, it's not gonna hamster nest, I don't think, by...
Yeah. I can't, I, I don't feel confident to answer about doing both completeness and final review in one meeting right now. I'll check, but that doesn't really make me comfortable.
Doesn't make me comfortable either.
Yeah, it seems like there's a fair number of things that are kind of in the wind, which...
Yeah, I guess I, and I mean, there, there's definitely some things I'd love to chat with the board on as far as how you take some, how you consider certain things. I know we discussed parking and things like that at the TRT, and there's a lot of things that we, you know, I guess I'd like to hash out at some point, you know what I mean? So, I don't know how you all, how you all handle that, I guess.
So, if we leave, if we leave the public hearing open and don't make a decision, okay, that's what we would do with the July meeting, that would be to close that down and, and resolve it.
Yes.
And then they would still have to come back a month later with the...
For the final plan. Yep.
So, there's not much advantage then to disproving it, disapproving it...
Right.
Versus leaving it open. I mean, it seems like it's the same thing, right?
It's the same thing.
Essentially, it is. Leaving it open means that we don't have to charge another fee and send out mailings all over again.
Okay. So, procedurally, it's a little, it's a little bit easier.
It's a little bit easier in, in that regard for the applicant and for staff. On the other hand, it's a little bit more difficult for the public in that they have to keep track of what's going on rather than depending on receiving a notice.
Okay. And what, and what form does the motion take then? It's a motion, I mean, it's a regular motion to find approval and then it's just held up?
You mean...
The voting.
A motion this evening?
Yes, yes, yeah. The motion, motion this evening would be...
To continue the public hearing to July 7th.
Okay. But the rest, the, the front end of that is to find it complete or whatever, blah, blah, blah. And then it's just, there's just no decision, in essence.
I don't think you have to say anything about completeness at all.
No, we can just make a motion to continue.
You're just postponing your decision, really.
Okay. So, the, so the motion would just be to continue?
Yes.
Continue consideration?
Continue the public hearing.
Right.
Yeah. In particular, to keep that open so that there's still, once we receive all of the information that's needed, the public hearing's still open so that any comment can be received without having to do an additional notice.
The ordinance says all orders for continuation shall specify the time and place at which proceeding shall be inconvened. So, I think our motion should be to continue to...
The next meeting.
The next meeting.
Right.
Specify, and I think that satisfies.
Sounds right. Sounds logical even. In addition to...
Dare we say? Yeah, I think I agree with where the board's going on this.
Chip, I have a question on your stormwater management plan.
Yep.
Section six, but page one, I can...
Sure.
I'm not sure if you can find that real quick or...
I'm there.
Under the stormwater submission, bullet number two says, "A runoff from the front of all seven buildings, driveways, project, private road, and front yard areas will be conveyed to either of two focal point treatment systems."
Yep.
Are those the little squared crosshatches?
They are, yes.
I didn't see any labels on those. Could you explain that?
Yeah, those are, so, yeah, focal points are, they're a proprietary stormwater treatment device. Based, I don't know if you've all been to, you may have seen them and not known it, but they're basically, if you go to some malls down in Southern Maine, you'll see them every now and then, these little tree boxes. these little tree boxes that have like a great inlet where stormwater enters. Those are filteras. It's a very similar concept, except these don't have the tree on them. Basically, stormwater goes in them and filters down through this media that they produce.
So it's kinda like a fancy detention pond?
Eh, yes, yep, yep. Here, this is exactly what we used for the Denver Way submission. We used two of these in roughly the same locations that you're seeing here. And the reason for that is just we had some space constraints that.
And that's why on the, on the site plan, it's all shown as overland, right?
Correct, yep. So yeah, you'll see both, both of those on there, and those are, it's all overland flow. Some of it is culverted to those, but yeah, those, those, you know, are roughly the same as where they were before.
They seem very small sometimes.
They are, that's, that's the benefit, that's what you're paying for with those, unfortunately, so.
Now, considering you're grabbing the water from both sides of the driveway, yeah, both sides of the road from each house, those devices are on one side of the road.
That's correct.
Obviously, one side, the right side is gonna have to pipe under the road?
Yeah, so you've, we've got a few culverts spaced to actually, you know, convey that over to each of those systems. There's also a diversion ditch uphill of the, of buildings three, five, and seven. That'll prevent water from Route One, for instance, from getting down there, where that's offsite water. But all the other ones will be piped one way or the other before they discharge to those focal point systems.
So it's piped underneath your road, driveway, whatever you wanna call it?
Exactly, underneath the roads, or underneath the driveways.
And is there, how, how deep does that have to be, that?
Those, those systems?
Yeah. The pipe underneath the road?
They'll be treated just like any driveway culvert, so try to get foot of cover typically.
Is there enough? Do we have enough elevation to, to take care of all those things?
Yes.
I mean, I understand what I'm saying, right?
Absolutely.
I'm not, I'm not expressing it very well.
I, I, I hear you, 100%. The grading on there takes that into consideration, the pipe sizes, those have all been sized and, and placed accordingly, so.
And, and I, I'm showing, I'm showing a lack of total review here. In this packet, there's a, a part of the explanation of the little graded thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, there should be a detail on that.
Okay.
That shows what that is, but, yes.
Okay.
Basically, it shows up in a giant bag and they just kinda set it in the ground.
That's cool.
In the TRT notes, talking about parking, I guess I'd direct this to staff, I guess. Each space should be independently accessible, not tandem. It's on the backside, third muller down. Could you explain that?
So, that's more, unless you are able to kinda derive that from, there's some diagrams in there that show you the dimensions and how you should, how you should arrange parking based on the different types that are available. So maybe you could kinda derive it from that, but the comment about tandem, that's really more just a good practice thing. It's not directly from the ordinance. So I think it's something that we don't really address. So that's more of my kinda subjective comment there. But, the idea being that if you have a garage space and then a space right in front of the garage, of course, only one car can leave at a time, right? And instead of independently accessible, meaning each car can exit on its own, you know, that, that could be the case whether a garage was involved or not. If it's just parking in a driveway like this, I think having a garage kinda complicates the situation even a little further because garages can be used for things other than parking cars. So, kind of what we were working through during TRT was the number of spaces required, the number of spaces they're providing, and then we have some overflow provisions in the ordinance, or a limit on excessive parking, and then we also have an overflow section. So, for multifamily dwellings, what's required is one and a half spaces per unit. And the way that our parking article is written, it's like a minimum requirement, and then as soon as you go over, you need special permission. So there's no real wiggle room in there, which is a overarching issue to address. So, the other kind of odd thing about that is when you have that one and a half per unit for multifamily dwellings, you might be thinking one building with 28 units, not seven buildings with 28 units that every two of them have their own driveway and garage, right? So, that's kind of imperfect, and the, the degree to which the board has, the board and staff have discretion to play with that is not as much as I would like it to be. So we had a very productive conversation about this. So, right now, they're proposing two spaces per unit, a combination of one garage space per unit, and then a surface space per unit. So, what still kinda needs to be worked out is how to provide a sufficient amount of parking that's not gonna cause problems for people within one of these homes or sharing a driveway. You know, we haven't seen a, the floor plan or, or an elevation or anything to show whether these are divided, or if two neighbors have one door, or. So it's still kind of an open question.
Yeah, I mean, I can.
I don't have a good answer yet, yeah.
I can fill in a little bit, yeah, I mean, they, each, each unit will have one, one half of each of those garages, basically.
Two, eh, two doors?
One door per unit, so.
So it's a shared door?
I'm sorry, are you gonna do one door, probably two doors, I would think, right?
Each unit will have their own door, and to the left of each door, the paving's gonna be a bit wider, so you can have your half space on the exterior, and the garage is not gonna be parked.
So is the argument that you can, if you're parked in the garage and your other car is outside somewhere, that you could get out then? Without, without, it would be wide enough to do that?
We, we can't accommodate that. The, the way the plan currently is, we would need to just bubble out the, the pavement on that side of the driveway to allow for that. Ultimately, what's happening is on the, on each side of that garage, there's gonna be a walkway that goes to the, goes to the door for each, each of those units. And that, that could just be extended down to make that driveway wider.
And these units are side by side, right?
Correct.
So there's, there's four, four dwelling units per building, and they're one, two, three, four?
Correct, yep.
Okay, so, so a, a site plan needs to show all that stuff?
Uh, yeah, we can certainly show that, absolutely.
And I say that because this one doesn't seem to.
Yep, no, I, I hear you. We can certainly add the door locations and.
And, and, I mean, I, I understand what you, I think I understand what you're saying about it being a little bit wider and so forth. But just, you just need to.
Yep.
Let me, I got this right. So you're gonna widen out the driveway so the outside car can park offset from where the car is parked in the garage, so the car in the garage can come out?
That's, that's an option, yes, I mean.
I think that, I think that's what the man back there said, pretty much, right?
Yep.
Okay. I'll throw another question.
Which actually.
You know, some, some will have two cars or some will have one car, but in, in this road here, where would you suspect visitors to park?
They'll end up, you know, parking on the side of the road for the most, in, in most cases. You know, there'll be no parking signs, obviously, around the fire system. But, yeah, it'll have to be roadside parking, most likely.
Well, one, one visitor could, in theory, I mean, if, if I am living in a unit and I have two cars, one's in the garage, one's to the, outside to the side, presumably, you could get another car?
Sure.
In the driveway without blocking your neighbors?
Oh, absolutely, and I, I think what we have.
So you have at least one visitor law, that space?
Well, we've, we've got an excess of parking anyway. We're, we're proposing two spaces per unit rather than the one and a half that is required. So that adds more questions, as, as Alana pointed out. But, you know, I think, yeah, like you said, I mean, some, some people may have one, some people may have two cars, right? So you're gonna have, you really don't know, parking wise, you really don't have a good feel for it until you build it, unfortunately. So all we can do is abide by the ordinance and.
And these are all rental units, right?
Correct.
I would wonder from Mr. Bates, I mean, you have several apartments out occupied now, and if I'm correct, all of them require one and a half parking places per unit?
Yep.
Do you have any sense of how many, of all your units, how many cars are actually there full time?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question. I guess it depends on the size of the unit, and of course, the amount of bedrooms that are, you know, I'm actually unfamiliar with, how many bedrooms per unit, three?
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms. In any two-bedroom apartment we have, I mean, we don't have any struggle at all with meeting the 1.5 ordinance.
Right.
Meaning we never.
So the new ones on Washington Street?
Never an issue.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, you, you roll the dice on, some people have one car, some people have two cars. And, you know, some people have no cars. And we have two people that have no cars, so. Visitors have never been an issue, we've had zero complaints, so.
There's nothing in, that prohibits on-street parking though, right?
It does.
I'm sorry?
So, it does. For the fire access road, it has to be a clear width of 20 feet.
Okay.
Which is what he, which is provided there. But if you start putting vehicles and parking and stuff like that for visitors, do you?
You don't have 20 feet, then?
Exactly.
Yep.
I think, you know, another option is to kinda ignore the existence of the garages and only count outdoor surface spaces, but that increases your impervious area, most likely.
And, yeah, we need more, a lot more parking to do that. We would need, well, yeah, we, we need like 14 more spaces. Which, to me is, I don't know, my, my thought there is, I feel like we're meeting the, meeting the ordinance by providing two spaces per unit. It would seem, I don't know, it.
I, I would wonder why you would omit a garage as a parking space?
I'm sorry, say again?
Why would you omit a garage as a parking space?
Yeah, I mean.
I wouldn't, but.
I, I don't really want to, I'm just trying to find ways to make the numbers work because any excess over the, there's no wiggle room in this calculation that I have found. It's, it's one and a half, and anything over is gonna require a special approval from you already.
So then I'll just, I mean, we can.
Providing two spaces per.
What if the left?
Let's just say we only have three per, per driveway. We've got two in the garage and one in, one in the driveway. I mean, ultimately, you know what I mean, we're just saying it's a parking spot, it's really just on paper, but, you know what I mean, it's.
And I know that, can't go over it right now, but I understand the, the section that Alana's talking about because we dealt with that out on. And, you know, it's a, if it's a case that the board has to approve a waiver to go beyond the required parking places for a project like this, I don't see the problem with it. It's not a case of you're increasing the impervious area. You're utilizing the garage space from one parking place and an exterior parking place. Now, now maybe getting a new dry and they span that, so. But I mean, it's a case of where, if there's two people and two cars and they gotta move the car, you know.
I had to move by this morning.
Isn't he exceeding the ordinance?
Yes.
So if he's offering two parking spots, that's already exceeding the ordinance?
Correct.
That, he is.
The, the issue is, there's this, there's this term in the ordinance that prevents you from exceeding the ordinance without, without.
Yeah, sorry, that was, that's.
Well, you're saying 1.5, you know.
You can't be under, you can't be over.
You can be over, just we have to provide.
I, I'm now, I'm now realizing what you're saying.
Yes.
That's a, that's silly.
And one and a half per unit is very low.
Right.
I'm of the position, if you, if you provide us two units, two parking spaces per unit, and it checks out and it makes sense, I would vote to grant a waiver.
Okay.
I'm just indicating that, and I think my fellow board members can't speak for them, but I think we're all trying to be logical and practical.
Sure.
If it looks like it works and staff is somewhat comfortable with it, at the very least, then I'm gonna, I would vote to grant a waiver.
Well, 'cause it doesn't, yeah, I agree. And it doesn't specify how or where the one and a half or whatever are. I mean, they kinda have to be in the vicinity, but.
Right.
You know, you could, you could, you could have, I mean, not that I'm suggesting you make this change, but you could have one of those kinda shed parking structures, right? Where everybody that's on the street parks there and there's no, there's no garages at all.
Right.
And there's no parking in front of a house, so.
Yeah, there's a number of ways to do it.
And, and we don't specify one way or the other, that you have to do that, right? So.
Right.
Yeah, I think that, I would go with a waiver for sure, personally.
Yep, we can do that, and if, I mean, the other option, like I said, that if it makes staff more comfortable, we could just designate that only one of those driveway spaces is actually a space. So that there's technically three per, I mean, it's never gonna be used like that, right? But it would, it would show on a plan and therefore pass the muster of the ordinance, if that feels better, I guess, as, as an option.
Doesn't feel better to me. I'd rather go the waiver route.
Me either.
But now this street is gonna remain a private street?
That's correct, yes.
And then the idea is that, could, could this ever be subdivided and, and units sold separately? Man, I realize that you're saying it's a, it's a rental property, but sometimes there are those.
I suppose.
Evolutions.
Yeah, I suppose in the future, they could either be, you know, condominiums, you know, broken up and done that way, or, but there's a whole bunch of other, we'd have to go through subdivision process to do that, for sure.
Of course, subdivision, yeah, I can do it.
Well, I mean, I was just trying to get at the, who maintains that road?
Sure.
And, you know, if it's a rental thing, then whoever is, you know, whosever it is, pays for the, does whatever you need to do to the road.
Yes, the, the.
Whereas if you start selling off, then, then you need condominium type agreements or whatever, so.
Because wasn't the second version of, the first version, if I remember correctly, was apartments? The second version was apartments and people buying them?
Yeah, of course, the subdivision, yeah.
Okay, so we're kinda talking about the same thing?
Right.
So if they did do, this unit's gonna, we're gonna sell it, they would have to come back for subdivisions?
Yeah, either way, whether it was a condominium or a cluster subdivision, they'd have to come back.
Right, so that's, that takes care of that?
Because I think three's the limit for coming to the planning board for a child.
There you go.
Put that in a motion, right?
Three strikes and you're out.
Stop coming back.
Yeah, exactly.
So are we good to go, do you think, or you got more questions?
I have a question about, like, snow storage at South End, if I can understand what I meant by it. I was wondering about the snow storage going out on the Leach Field location, but that's really not an approximate Leach Field location, right? Because that's at the south end of the road, at the T intersection? I mean, it says approximate Leach Field location, but that's actually in existence now?
That is located, yeah.
Okay. Is?
The snow storage is not, I don't think that's, it's not anticipated to be on top of that. We've got a location between buildings five and seven, three and five, two, closer to Route One. Yeah, so we've got those four locations, by the looks of it.
Now that he's made me look at this.
Yeah.
Between buildings five and seven, towards the driveway.
Correct.
There's a trapezoid in there.
Yep.
What is that?
That is the snow storage, actually, I.
Oh, that's the snow, that, oh, yeah.
So that, that little, that leader sort of got lost underneath the building there?
I knew that, I knew that. Yeah, yeah, okay, gotcha now. Because I thought the snow storage was further out.
I see, okay, sure.
Like where it says "snow storage."
I can understand.
Okay, sorry, but, but it's clear, actually. All right, sorry, sorry, sorry.
And where'd you say the snow storage was again, Chip? I see the two coming in before you get to the first house.
And then if you look between buildings three and five, sort of up between the, the driveway. And then if you look between buildings three and five, sort of up between the, the driveways for both of those, closer to the road.
Okay.
There's a little trapezoid there.
Oh, okay.
A arrow says snow storage.
Okay.
Then there's another similar one between five and seven, a little larger. Same side of the road there.
Okay. I mean, you don't think you would need any more snow storage to the south end of, like, beyond six and seven?
Realistically, I think, I mean, most of your snow storage is going to take place on the, on the side of the roads as you're, you know, plowing this anyway. Um, you know, I think, um, this would be more for, yeah, if you have to plow some, some of these areas that are a little bit tighter, suppose, you know, theoretically, they could store some of it in these snow storage locations.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I have no more questions.
No, sir.
Uh, but I guess we still need to have a public hearing, is that correct?
Yeah. I said, I think you open the public here, but don't close it, right?
Yes.
Are you gonna?
No.
Well, I know, but are you gonna try the motion?
No.
Do you understand?
Do we, do we, do we need, I mean, if we're, if we are having a public hearing that we're leaving open, the motion comes after that, right?
Yes, just instead of closing it, I don't know if you would want.
I guess.
You don't want to table everything. You just want to continue the item in the public hearing. So.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to the lawyer to, among us, to articulate this.
I think what we want to do is move to continue the public hearing to the July 7th, 2021 planning board meeting.
So what's the point of the two and?
Do we have to say we want to continue the preliminary hearing too, or just a public hearing?
This public hearing is the, well, preliminary, you would still be going, the public hearing for the preliminary. So I would, I move that we continue the public hearing for the preliminary plan review.
I thought you were gonna open it and see if there was anybody.
Oh, didn't we open it?
I opened.
You did.
Yeah, I think you did.
Oh, okay.
It was, was very subtle.
It was subtle, yeah.
Was nuanced.
One of our hearings.
Any comments from the public? So I move that we continue the preliminary site plan review, public hearing to July 7th, 2021 planning board meeting. You second?
All in favor?
Thank you.
That's pretty exciting.
Staff, you're all set with questions in that regard?
I'm all set, yes.
So, are you gonna be at the next meeting?
No. I'll be watching it, though. I've got John Bates's cell phone number, too.
Why would you suffer through that?
So are we gonna do something with this letter? Or do we need to do something with this letter?
I don't think you need to do anything, but I can address it briefly under staff comments.
That's right, there's an item six there. How clever.
Yes, so included in your packets was this letter, um, that was addressed to the city council, um, but it arrived in our mailbox, addressed to a planning board, John Holt. So I don't know if they meant John Fink. So I thought that it should be shared with you. It seems like you were kind of intended as a CC. Um, there's really not much to be concerned about here, and I believe the council is addressing it, um, as appropriate. But the letter writer, it's, um, the Finneys, they make a couple comments that are kind of, you know, related to the planning board's responsibilities. So really, they're talking about improving Nicole and Road. Um, if, if there were to be a project to undertake such a big improvement, maybe that would be in a capital improvements program in some communities. Planning board has a role in that. Um, as far as I know, in Ellsworth, you don't at this time. Um, there's also mentions about, like, the main land use ordinance and no lot and any subdivision shall be sold until frontage meets town road standards. Um, I think that that comes from the, the model subdivision ordinance, which we in general follow in our subdivision ordinance, but that would really apply to, um, a project like the one we just looked at where a private road is being built and somebody's selling, um, a lot there without completing what they need to do. So that doesn't really apply to Nicole. And it turns out that Nicole and is partially public and partially private with public maintenance. So there's a long and convoluted history there that, um.
Do we have a public easement on the private section to do maintenance?
It goes back to, like, the 1960s agreement to put in a boat launch and, um, the city's obligation to maintain access to the boat launch and agreement with the state. So I don't know all the details and hopefully I won't have to anytime soon, but I do know that it's complicated. And, um, so, just a little bit of background. And then he also makes mention of impact fees somewhere in here and doesn't really say what he means, but impact fees are something that could be considered at some point in the future. Um.
But we don't have that now.
Right.
Right?
Right. And if you did, it would probably be something to put into the UDO, but yes, we don't have that now. And so I didn't want to not give it to you, but I didn't want to not provide any context either.
Now, this was for 45 years, and this comes before the council every five to 10 years as a.
This particular road?
Yeah, this particular issue, the fact that it's, it's not strictly a public road, um, you know, Title 30 deals with what you can, what municipalities can and can't do with roads that are not public. Uh, so a lot of it goes back to statutory issues, goes back to, you know, the original wording of the easement. Uh, and basically, the, the residents down there are never happy with what the council decides because up to this point, they have not agreed to do anything more than limited maintenance.
So we could, on this same vein, what, why don't you go ahead and say what you're gonna say?
Oh, um, it just, it, my impression is that it's such a long and complicated history that it's maybe not even clear to the residents how they could organize themselves to improve their road.
The biggest issue, they'd have to, they'd have to be able to give us a 50-foot easement, which does, it doesn't exist now. And people have, it's, it's, as Elaine said, this, the city looked at it, I don't know, four or five years ago when Michelle Beal was here, the cost of trying to do it. The bill, the road is not built to any standards.
No.
It's all clay-based, we have to put in there ways, we go in and grade it and bring sand and gravel in every, every spring to fix it up.
Well, you have to realize, too, is when this first started, camps on Green Lake were camps.
Yeah.
They were not year-round houses. They were not 300, 400, 500, $600,000 year-round houses. You know, they were your typical camp.
Mm-hmm. And there's a little bit of a buyer beware.
I was saying, I was thinking the same thing. And, you know, it's like buying a house on a railroad tracks and then complaining that the train is too noisy. Um, I mean, it would, I kind of compare it to the road that the city and the homeowners did out on the Bucksport Road.
Or Lexis Way?
Yes.
Yeah.
Where the, the homeowners got a SaaS to fee to get the road back up to stand and pave it, of course.
But that was.
Nicole and Road's a lot longer.
But that was built to city standards in the beginning. That's, that's the difference.
Oh, yeah. So to try and do that on Nicole and Road, I mean, that fee per house would be probably phenomenal.
So it's a point of interest for us, but that's it, pretty much.
That's it. And no action needed.
Other comments?
I, I just have a question on where we're at with comprehensive plan amendments and then thus potentially ordinance amendments. Um, now that I believe the city council voted to allocate some funds to that process, can you?
Yep. So, um, in the FY 2022 budget, there's $35,000 toward comprehensive plan, but that is, the full rewrite, um, is estimated at like 80 to a hundred thousand dollar project. So the idea is that that's like year one of two funding. Um, I'm not super clear at this point on whether we would wait for the entire thing to be funded before we start or take on, you know, the first half of it with $35,000. But it appears to be making it through the budget process. I think there's just, they'll vote at their next regular meeting, I think, to, to finally approve that budget. So, um, it hasn't really been challenged. So that's, or, you know, challenged in the sense of should we fund this or not? So that looks promising. Um, and then you kind of hinted at the relationship to ordinance changes, and that's something that I'm thinking a lot about right now because I, every day I find something that I would love to address. Um, so, you know, it does beg the question of what changes can we make right now and what would be better to wait to have a, a comp plan behind it informing it? You know, I don't think we're going to propose anything that is wildly out of step with the plan we have or the plan we will have, but, um, it's still, you know, I think bigger things like if there was a big rezoning question would be wait till the comp plan. But if we want to tweak the parking ordinance so you have a little bit of room to, um, have some discretion, or I do, or, um, rewrite the categories or whatever it is, I think that that would be appropriate. So.
Perhaps maybe a good idea would be to, staff put together a list of topics or sections in here and.
Yep.
Workshop it.
Yep.
To see how, okay, boards expressing interest and, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
We want to address that, that can wait, kind of prioritize it.
Yep.
Cause obviously, probably a lot of substantive changes won't be able to take place until, if it line a new comp plan.
You can actually get, change a lot without, the, the law is that it can't be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. So as long as we're doing things that aren't like blatantly in, you know, conflict with the comp plan, if it's silent on it.
You know, the new comp plan would change from the old one.
Yeah, so I think.
You know, we made a change with it, the new comp plan, would we then be, you know, invite, not in violation, but.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I get that, but I think what, there's a lot in, that we keep running into every month that I think is just cleaning up stuff that would, I don't think would be a rose.
Well, I have to say that, that though, you know, incremental tweaking that goes in different directions.
Dangerous, too.
Is dangerous in the sense that, you know, you change something over here and it's like, oh, wow. Whereas if you were taking a comprehensive look at, different than a comprehensive plan, the comprehensive look at the UDO, then presumably your chances are better that the whole thing will fit together.
Yeah, I think it's a balance, right?
At the same time, if, if it's gonna be, you know, the comprehensive plan conclusion's gonna be five years out, then that's a different story, it seems to me.
Right.
I would hope that that's.
Looks like we're looking at two years at best.
I think so.
When, when you say the 35,000 or whatever that number was, that's not like your time. I mean, that's a, that's a consultant price or something, yes?
That's the goal.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
And, don't you agree with me that if we get the ball rolling and we have to go back for more funding, our chances are better that we're gonna get that funding because it's already started?
Um.
So you, you never can guarantee what the next budget's gonna hold.
Indeed, indeed.
True.
Or who, yeah, right, exactly. Who's gonna be doing the voting?
Yeah. I think that amount was to be palatable partly.
Palatable?
Yeah.
To council, yes.
Oh, to council, okay.
Yeah. But yes, if we're doing well, I mean, I, I, I would hope that they just see that coming in the next year and that they're prepared for that. I mean, that's what we.
We all know we're behind.
Oh, yeah. Yes. Um.
Grossly behind.
Yes. And what we wanted to do as a going-away present to Dwight was work on Shoreland and haven't really gotten as far with that as I'd like.
The problem is, and although John won't agree, but the offices are quite busy, you know? And for, for us to get three people, three departments together at the same time to work on a project is hard. And then you, then we got the state, they never tell us when they change a statute, as you know. So you have to stumble upon it or someone tells you. Shoreland zoning, which we should have done in 2015, we'd missed that deadline. Now you want, it makes, you want to wonder if you want to wait and do the, the 2000, the next, the next level, which is only four years away, you know?
Oh.
So.
Oh, they're gonna change.
About every 10 years they change it, yeah.
Yeah.
That was the guideline, so.
So we do have a list going. Carrie's got her own list going. I've got a list going.
Just like, and Lori's got a list.
If the, if the comprehensive plan is so far out of date, does it get to a point where the state says you can't do this, you can't?
But why not the only ones out of date?
No, no.
But I thought that, I thought we were at that point with the state, though, pretty much. No?
Um, I mean, I haven't gotten any nasty grams about it or anything. I mean, I know that it is no longer consistent and that's not ideal, but, um, it doesn't seem like a, a huge threat.
Okay.
Um.
I think as far, as long as the comp plan revision even normally takes.
Yeah.
You know, if, if they fully funded it, you know.
It's still a year long.
Now we're acting under maybe 50% funding. So it's still gonna be a long process. Uh, I'm gonna have the board just sort of go ahead with looking at what changes are good to make now.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of waiting.
But this is a good time. The new census report will be coming out. We're gonna have all the new numbers for everything.
Yeah, that's true.
But the cost of mapping now is probably double compared to what we did 15 years ago. To have all the digital mapping done, we didn't have done unless we do some in-house. I don't know. Uh, but in the old days, you just hired East Main Development, you paid them a fee for $20,000 back in the, when I first met Michelle Gangioun up in Madewomka, which you couldn't pronounce Madewomka either. But, you know, we paid $21,000 way back then. That was in like 96, 97, you know? So, say a hundred thousand now for a community the size of Ellsworth isn't too far off.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, ideally, I mean, Jan is the one who obtained those budget estimates and has been shepherding this through, and, um, I need to catch up with her on, you know, assuming the budget goes into effect July 1, what's our game plan? Um, but, you know, ideally to me, that funding is also to have a consultant who's going to have a, who's going to facilitate a strong public engagement process. Um, cause I think we've seen the result of not rewriting the comp plan on a, in a timely manner and that the public has engaged themselves to do some work, um, seeing that.
I just kind of wonder, okay, if it's only funded at 35,000 and most of that presumably goes to a consultant, you know, if you put out an RFP for a consultant, you know, are they gonna want to buy into a half project?
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, we could.
They're gonna want to know that there's a phase, the phase two, and that they're at the very top of the list for that phase two.
Right. I mean, you can look at it by chapter. You can look at the vision and all that kind of, um, existing data collection. Yeah. Um, you know, you want the freshest data once it's done.
There are ways, there are ways to subdivide the effort, which makes some sense.
Yep. Yep.
Although, again, you know, a consultant's, we're the one, do phase one with the idea that, well, yeah, I'm right here for phase two.
Right. Yeah, we, we don't want to end up with two different people. So, yeah, I gotta catch up with Jan on what the, what the, uh, concept was there.
We good?
Uh, no, we haven't adjourned yet.
I know.
Just so you guys know, I'm gonna be going in front of the city council on the 21st, um, about our fire prevention ordinance for the 13R, 13D. Um, it's gonna get put on the agenda. Uh, our one licensed guy in the area lost his license due to a, more of a technicality of verbiage with the fire marshal's office. So right now, we don't have anybody doing the 13R, 13Ds, and basically he's taking it in front of city council so we can see about trying to amend the fire prevention ordinance. Um, so I just want to let you guys know so you don't go, okay, how come we didn't hear about it beforehand? Um.
Now, we're hearing that.
Yeah. So the, the, the idea is, is that Dwight and I are working with Jesse Dura, who does the 13R, 13Ds for this area. He's the only one, actually, that serves this entire area. The next person that is, is actually down in Portland, Augusta area. Um, and they won't come up here. But that's one of your three fire protection options in your.
But that's one of your three fire protection options in your, in their, in our ordinance. So he's, he's trying to see about what we can do to help him. Dwight and I have been trying to get in touch with the Fire Marshal. We're pretty, we're pretty much getting nowhere.
Good luck.
What impact does that actually have? What is it that Jesse does?
Because down Neville Shore, that's all residential sprinklers.
We can't issue a CO until they can get it done, and they can't get it done.
And they got one house that he just, he was able to finish up. He's got another house that's about 80% done and needs to have the sprinklers put in. And then you got another house that, that can't even start working on because they can't, if they can't get the permits to put the open door system in, then there's no sense to, they have to either come back to, to planning board to get a amendment to do a cistern, which they can do, because it's still under the development stage, because it hasn't gone to an HOA, because none of the lots have sold. So that, that is a huge, that is an issue, because it also affects other subdivisions. Uh, where we're saying we offer these three options, well, realistically, fire hydrants, you're not gonna get in a lot of places. So that only, that leaves you cisterns, which you can put just about anywhere, but you really, the cheaper version is doing the residential sprinklers, but we don't have anybody in this area to do it.
Makes it interesting.
So what, what is the proposed amendment?
I don't know.
Oh, it's just a discussion right now?
This is a workshop, like a workshop, a workshop.
Yeah, but just so you guys know, before we go into the next planning board and we run into an issue of like, okay, what can we do? You guys, you guys know ahead of times.
Yeah.
So, listen, if I, if Mr. Bates wants to put out another apartment building?
No, actually, it'll be on city water.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, John, he's, yeah.
So if you're within city water, or the right-of-way for the city water, you have to, yeah, the sprinkler. That comes right out of IBC and NPA. If you're out like Neville Shore, that's where those three, that's the fire protection ordinance comes in play, where you have one of the three options you have to do. And that also depends on if you're talking, if it's apartment buildings or if it's just actual townhouses or residential. And that's where the 13R, 13Ds come in place, because really what it is, is it's just piped off of your actual well, runs off your domestic water, and it's basically PEX piping that runs through your house.
And so if somebody wants to put in just a residential sprinkler system in their house right now, they can do it?
They'd have to see if they can try to get somebody from downstate, or they can get main fire protection, which is gonna cost them pretty much double what Jesse Dura was offering for services.
The open door system's unique because it actually runs off your domestic water.
Right.
It's one big open loop.
Yeah.
So you don't have to have it flushed every year, there's no maintenance involved, just no, you know, as long as your house, pump that your house is running, you've got fire protection. And we thought that was a perfect solution.
So what would it take to get you certified?
My night set two.
Your what?
Night, my night set two, I'd have to go to a class.
What are you, what are you waiting on, Thomas?
I know, well, I go, I'm going to class next week for about a week down in New Hampshire, and then I've got another class that I got coming up in August, and then I'm looking at another one in December, so... I'm working on it, so it's the baby steps.
Well, it sounds like there's an opening in the market around here.
Now, would you like to make a motion? Yes, I motion, I make motion that we adjourn. Oh, and, and before that, we should have a, a motion recognizing Dwight and his...
How fast can you go to door?
That, too, the myriad contributions that he's made over the years, so...
Oh, it's been fun.
Huzzah!
Yeah, thank you, Dwight.
16 years.
Well done.
16, wow!
Lori stood up for me for 15.
That's hard to believe.
Lori should get in the war.
It seems like you've been around for longer than 16.
I know, but I can bet you the most time. Have a good one.
Take care, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so all in favor of your term?
You're here.
Anybody left here to vote? Oh, yeah, okay.